If you would please come to order. The hour being 7:45, I call this special meeting of the town of West Bridgewater to order. We apologize for the delay in calling the meeting to order, but it is a good reason we did so because there are so many here. This space holds 340 and I won't say how many are in here. But you're all in here. I want to thank the young ladies from the high school who tried to get things working out in the outer foyer so that we could have kept some of you out there, but it didn't work. I would just ask that everybody silence your cell phones. And before we begin, if you would rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As I said, it's great to see so many people here. This is the largest town meeting since you gathered to vote, to spend the money to build this school. Is that better?
Yeah.
For those in the balcony, there is a microphone up there which is floating somewhere. For those of you down here on the main floor, the microphone is right here at front center. When you come forward, please address questions, comments to the chair, and when coming forward, state your name and address. At this time, I will ask the town clerk to read the return of the warrant.
Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of West Bridgewater qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School Auditorium in said town on April 20th, 2017 at 7:00 PM, then and there to act on the following articles to wit. Pursuant to the warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of West Bridgewater qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the time and place mentioned within by posting 15 attest copies within the warrant at various locations throughout Precinct 1 and 2, 14 days at least before the time of holding the aforementioned special town meeting. Bruce L. Holm, constable of West Bridgewater.
Thank you. When we begin, Select McKinnon will be moving the first article. I will have him move the article. Following a second, there will be a brief video presentation, and then we will open the meeting to questions and comments. And as you came in, you were given a green card with a ballot attached. Do not lose either one. As allowed by general bylaw, Article 3, Section 12, I will be calling for a ballot vote on the first article. Select McKinnon.
Move that the town borrow a sum of money not to exceed 4.5 million to purchase Riverbend Country Club located at 250 East Center Street. Said real estate consisting of approximately 167 acres, more or less, as described in a deed recorded with Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 14890, page 142.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Kinnon and Mr. Gagny, you have your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Last week, David and I held a presentation in this auditorium. I hope that many of you had the opportunity to watch it on YouTube or on Channel 9. We've put together a condensed version for this evening, lasting probably about 15 minutes. Okay, so the first question that we have been getting is why purchase? The main reason is to preserve the 167 acres of open space. Riverbend was noted in the open space plans in both 1999 and 2009, and we still feel it's important to preserve open space in town, and this has provided us the opportunity to do so. A big reason is the development. What potentially could happen if we don't purchase Riverbend? And there's definitely the potential for it to be developed. The town would lose prime open space. As I said, the golf course consists of 167 acres. Approximately 112 of those are considered uplands and may have the potential to be developed. As we know, we found out on Scotland Street and other areas that 40B regulations allow development to come right up to wetlands and avoid the local bylaws, including the no-touch buffer zones. In some cases, we don't know if this would happen for sure or not, but in some cases, wetlands can be duplicated and considered moved to mitigate the bylaws. So the Turnip Riverbend is the development on the corner of 106 and East Street adjacent to the golf course. It sits on 3.2 acres and consists of four buildings with 12 units each for a total of 48 units. As I said previously, Riverbend Golf Course is about 112 acres that are considered uplands or potentially developable. If you take the numbers from the adjacent complex and compare them to the potential of Riverbend, there are 112 acres divided by 3.2 is 35 times the size of the adjacent complex. That would be 1,680 units. This isn't reasonable. We would never expect that many units, but we do expect a reasonable number would be in the 400 range. That's about 25% of this. 420 apartments would result in somewhere between 168 and 210 additional children in our school system based on the numbers of children to houses that we have currently. Town Administrator Gagny spoke with the Board of Health Agent. The golf course has been perked 12 times with 12 holes, and all have passed. They've only tested one area, and that area is the 18th fairway, and that is the area adjacent to the existing 40B complex on the corner of East Street and 106. The soil is considered to be in good condition, and this area alone would allow for the duplication of the existing complex. So that area alone could result in 48 units. So there is some revenue that would be associated if this were to be developed. We took the actuals of the existing complex, the Turnip Riverbend, and compared them to what we think would be a reasonable number of units built on the golf course. So $222,000 were collected in permitting fees to build the existing complex. That results in $461 per unit. And there is annual tax revenue that we receive from these units. Totals $110,000. That's $2,300 per unit. Our average tax bill is almost $5,400. So it's substantially less per unit. Now looking at the golf course. If we use that 25% capacity number, the 420 units, the building fees would come to nearly $200,000, a fairly substantial number, and would also collect at $2,300 a unit, almost a million dollars a year in additional tax revenue. Now looking at the cost of providing services to these units. The 420 units, as I said, would result in roughly 200 students. The annual school budget is $13 million. Right now, there are 1,287 students in the school system. So divide the total budget by the number of students, we get roughly $10,000. So the average, or the projected number of potential students, if the course were developed, would be about 189 students times $10,000 per student is $1.9 million per year. So we're already well above that $1 million that would be collected in tax revenue. There are also other costs. For instance, one of them is the water department. It's been stated that if additional homes, I believe it's 500 homes per well, so another well may need to be built. As I said, the school would suffer operationally, but there might be a capital cost as well. We might have to build another school or build an addition specifically to the elementary schools. There's roughly 287 students in the Howard School right now, and the capacity of that building is 300. In other things, such as police, fire, building inspector's office would need additional staff specifically for this project, additional seniors living in the complex, additional staff at the Council on Aging. So in front of you is a summary of Riverbend's current audited financials. You'll see that the top line gross revenue ranges from 1.2 to 1.5 million over these five years. They have a current mortgage payment of $557,000 annually. They pay right now about $26,000, $27,000 in real estate taxes. We do receive some real estate taxes from Riverbend currently. And they show a net loss, and this net loss is in their audited financials, but we know that Riverbend does pay a salary to the current owner-operator and to other people. So the owner's making a salary, but on the books, it shows a loss. So if we were to simply change the $557,000 annual mortgage to a $333,000 management fee, which is what this plan entails, we'd already be at a profit. So if nothing changes at the golf course, other than that annual payment is reduced from a $557,000 mortgage to a $333,000 management fee, they're already in the black. Here's the P&amp;L for Johnson Management, the management company who has won the bid to manage the golf course. We did reference checks. I talked to a selectman in Duxbury. David talked to a few other town administrators in other towns that they run courses in. We've heard great things about them. There's a quote at the bottom. Johnson runs a first-rate organization and pays on time. So we've looked into them. They had to provide their financials to us in their bid. They had to provide references. We did reference checks, and everything turned out well. So the net purchase price of the golf course would be $4.1 million. We'd pay $4.5 million and would receive $400,000 right back. That $400,000 will cover the $12,000 or so in legal fees right off the top that the town has already incurred and may incur additional costs. So that $388,000 is what we estimate to be, if the golf course were to sell to a developer, what they'd have to pay in rollback taxes. This is essentially a fee to take it out of 61A, which allows them to pay a lower rate, lower tax rate if they agreed to keep it as open space. So that fee to take it out of 61A would be that $400,000. The full and fair tax assessment of the golf course is roughly $5.6 million, and we also had the golf course appraised by an independent appraiser for $3.9. That $3.9 is just as a golf course. I think it's obvious that if it were sold as developable land, that opportunity cost, that the value would be much greater. So we had bond $4.5 million, and we estimate, John Duggan, the town treasurer, has done research on what the interest rate would be. We expect between 4.5 and 5%. So the annual loan payment would be between $276,000 and $293,000. That means that we'd be putting between $56,000 or between $40,000 and $56,000 into a reserve account. That's the $333,000 management fee minus the $206,000 to $292,000, and then would also be paying a $6,000 annual insurance fee. That insurance fee is general liability insurance. It's on top of what Johnson Management would be required to already cover us for. Would have to be grossly negligent, and the settlement or judgment would have to be over $200 million, or, oh, I'm sorry, over $2 million for our insurance policy to kick in. In front of you is the cash that we would have in the revolving fund. Starting on day one, we'd have $388,000 in that revolving fund. That alone covers more than a year of the, about a year and a half of the annual loan payment. We'd also have that $40,000 to $56,000 per year in that difference between the management fee and our loan payment, our profit. So that would build up over time. In 20 years, we'd have a million to $1.4 million saved in that revolving account. One thing to note, we would be losing $26,000 or so in tax revenue. So if you look at the true net to the town as a whole, you'd subtract $26,000 from that. But this is the cash that would actually go into the revolving account.
So hello. So when we negotiate the contract, we wanted to negotiate a contract that was good on behalf of the entire town, not just the fact they were trying to buy the golf course. So as the negotiations evolved, we were able to actually add a whole bunch of value-added components for different segments of the town as well. So first things first is that if they were ever want to purchase the course after 20 years, because it's a 20-year management contract, they have that right to do it. We'd have to come back to the town. You would have to vote to approve it. We would owe between $1.8 and $2 million on the bond, and if they wanted to purchase it, they could for what we owe, so we don't lose anything. But we would require that the deed be golf, have a restriction on it that it would always stay a golf course. So we wouldn't make this 20-year commitment to them, and then 20 years later, we're right back here in the same boat. So they would have to put a deed restriction on it. The second thing is we currently have a high school golf team. Apparently, from what I found out last week, we have about 20 members. But regardless of how many members we have, we have a high school golf team. We have a local golf course in town, and they play in Easton. That doesn't make any sense. So what we've done is, is that we've negotiated to the contract that our high school team is going to be able to play their practices and play their matches and not have to pay the green fees. So does that help the golf team? Yeah. But you know what else it helps? It helps you as parents, because you're all paying an athletic fee somewhere during the course of the year, and that helps to be able to fund their expenses. So the hope was, is to try to help you from that standpoint. And in addition to that, is that they're going to have to provide, they're going to take care of the cost for the athletic shirts as well. There'll be two fundraisers allowed every single year that are town-affiliated, that they are going to be required to allow them to be able to do those fundraisers without having to pay fees. So for example, if you run a golf course and you're affiliated with the town, and right now, the Boosters Association with the school and the police department with the police association runs them, if those are the two fundraisers that are used, and they pay $50 a person, and there's 100 people, that means you're saving $5,000 that they can use for the original mission of those fundraisers. Additionally, they're going to be required at their expense to sponsor a junior golf tournament. This was important to me for multiple reasons. One is, is that if we want this to be a long-term viable business success, it's not just the current people that we want golfing. We'd like to see some younger people be involved as well. On top of that, think of the outlets that children have. A lot of them are on video games, or they're doing whatever they're doing after school, and not all of us, we were all there. We didn't always do the things we probably should be doing. So this just allows an additional outlet for people to be able to go to the golf course, learn the trade, and then potentially take it up as a sport, which I think will have long-term beneficial consequences. They'll also be required to do an annual resident appreciation day. So what would happen there? What they would do is, is that the pro is going to run clinics at no charge, allowing people, whether you're a golfer or not, to again, either get better at your trade or learn the trade. And we have actually three specific clinics that they're going to have to operate. For example, driving, on the drive course, or they're going to allow you to do chipping or learn how to do putting, and this will change on an annual basis. They have a conference room there, and we are, well, need I say, we don't have a lot of space in town. So one of the areas that we could use is we could use additional municipal space. So they're going to be required that with due notice, and we can't do it every night, but with due notice, we're going to be able to allow some of our municipal meetings to take place in their municipal office space as well. And within five years, they're going to create or install a professional projection technology system, so that way, if we want to do overhead projections like this, that we can. They're also going to be required within the first five years to spend a minimum of $25,000 in upgrading the cart paths and doing the sides of that area for turf management, because that area's a little bit worn. And currently, although there's a putting area, they're going to bring the putting area up to a higher standard, and currently, there is no chip and green, so they will install a chip and green as well. We've also, as we looked at this, we wanted to make sure, how could we best protect the town? This is an investment. It shouldn't cost the town any money as long as it goes according to plan, but life doesn't go according to plan. So what we want to do is, we want to put as many specific outlined protections in this contract as we possibly could to best protect all of us. So first of all, they're going to have to require a $350,000 bond that's going to be given to us on day one. Why is that number important? Because day one, when they take over, their contract is going to be less than $300,000 in the bond payment. So they hand us the bond cert, and on day one, they file bankruptcy, we already have the entire year covered. No money from the taxpayer. Coupled with the $388,000 that we get upfront at the time of the sale, that means we can go a whole two years before we'd ever have to go to the taxpayer for a dollar, and in that two-year period, we'll figure out what we have to do. Either get another management company, sell it off to a developer if you want to develop it, sell it off to somebody else who wants to do it as a golf course. That'll be your decision. They're going to be required to provide quarterly status reports to us, so that way, we know financially they're doing well. They don't all of a sudden come to us and say, hey, we're in trouble. We're going to be able to pay attention and watch them. We're going to be able to audit their financials at any time. They're going to also provide monthly financial reports, and those monthly financial reports are pertaining to how many golfers they have, how many carts went out. Again, we just want to be able to track their business. They're going to be required to carry a $2 million general liability insurance policy, so that will name the town as additional insured, so if there's any lawsuits there that happen for whatever reason, they're the ones that have to pick up the first $2 million. And just for people that are unaware, municipalities cannot be sued for more than $100,000 unless it's a civil rights, federal civil rights violation. So that's why the $2 million should never kick in on behalf of the town. The workers' comp insurance that every business in Massachusetts has to cover, they're going to have to carry. And they're also going to be responsible for all outstanding gift certificates. Again, this was important to us as we negotiated. Some of you in the room are golfers. Some of you have already purchased gift certificates. You're holding on to them. You're waiting to be able to use them. And part of you, you might be saying, geez, you know what? If this changes hands, are we going to be able to still honor those gift certificates? The answer is yes. In addition to that, we also have a whole bunch of legal issues that we had to address as well. So if we ever think at any time that there's an issue or a problem with this course or the management, the Board of Selectmen have the legal right to require them to come to a meeting. That's important. Understand, a private business in town right now that you may not be happy with, and the Board of Selectmen wants to say, come in, we'll talk to you, they don't have to show up. They do now. That's on camera. It's videoed. It's archived, so if we ever have to use it at a later date, say in a legal case, we'll have that ability to do it. But they're going to have to answer the questions. We're going to have the ability to be able to do town inspections at any time. On top of that is that if, right now, it's a management company that's been there for 30 years. But sooner or later, they're going to potentially want to sell off their company or they're going to allow maybe their children to take it over. So we put in that there are no assignment rights. They can't just automatically will the rights of this course to somebody else just because they sell or they allow somebody else to inherit the property. We have a strong indemnification clause to make sure that they can't come after the town for something that they've done. And while some people are always going to be concerned about them filing bankruptcy, because when you go to bankruptcy, a lot of times what they do is they do it so they can rewrite their contracts and try to put themselves in a better position. If they file bankruptcy, the contract is automatically severed. They can't do it as a negotiating tool to try to get a better deal from the town. It's automatically severed. We'll make a decision what we want to do at that point. And any default in the contract, again, the entire contract is laden with performance management metrics. So if they do not adhere to those performance management metrics, and the Board of Selectmen determine that, they can sever the contract at that point. If we go to court, we win, we get 12% interest, plus we can also receive trouble damages. So it's a huge incentive on their part to make sure that they settle or they abide by the contract. The manager's going to be responsible for all of the following. They're going to pay for the utilities and the water and the upgrades and the carts. They're going to be in charge of all maintenance. They're going to hire the employees. They're going to be responsible for their benefits. They're going to hire and fire those people, not the town. They will not be town employees. They will not be subject to town benefits. The maintenance plan is defined, so we know exactly what it is that they have to do and what they have to honor. For those that are worried about snow and ice, they have to plow. And the golf superintendent, who's the person who's in charge of the course, needs a minimum of five years professional golf management experience in order to assume that role. On file with the town, we will have their pest management program, groundwater, pesticide, and fertilizer management programs. And if we at any time, because they're on the town river, believe that there's a river issue, water issue, water quality issue, we have the right to be able to go on and do water testing and access the property at any time. We will retain the naming rights. The Board of Selectmen at a later date, if they choose to, if they think that it would be better not to keep it as Riverbend and name it something else, they'll have that ability to do it. And they will have to submit annual five-year capital budget plans, so we can work with them to know exactly what they're planning on doing with the property. As you know, they do not currently have a function hall. It is one thing that would be nice. It is, at this point, the plans that have been drawn up, it would be about a million-dollar investment. They'll have the opportunity to be able to explore that option, and if they do explore the option, the septic system that is already there has the capacity for the function hall, so it does not have to be increased in size. Now, the reality is this. We're going to collect enough money. We're going to cover all of our payments. It will cover the $26,000 in tax revenue that we normally receive. There will be a surplus above and beyond that. Everything is laid out in the contract, and we feel like we've done a pretty good job of being able to protect the town as possible. But there's risks. There's risks in everything. We think that we've done a pretty good job of minimizing the risks, but there are risks. If they file bankruptcy, we'll retain it. We'll have to make a decision with it. But we'll have money in the bank to cover those, so we don't have to go to the taxpayer. But that could happen. What would we do at that point? We can issue another RFP, request for proposal, and seek another management company. We already had multiple bids for this one. We might have more in the future. We have a surplus in the revolving account, so that way, again, the town taxpayer is not paying for it. There'll be money in that bank, so that way, we can cover the expenses if we need it. Upfront, we receive a cash bond cert that is in excess of what the annual costs are. So again, it gives us some financial flexibility. And worst case is, after 20 years, if you want to sell the property, you can. And during the 20 years, if they default and they're not doing their job, and the town wants to sell it, whether to a developer or to another golf course operator, that will be your right. You guys are the ones that are in charge of that. There's been some questions about the condition of the course. Anthony and I, I might add fairly poorly, played the course last year. The course was in good shape, a little worse after we were done, but the reality is that the course was actually in very good shape. My understanding is that they had an irrigation system issue a couple of years ago. It was addressed. We know that at this point. But hey, those things happen. So the course itself was in good shape last year. The Assistant Town Administrator Mallory and I actually drove the course last week. We took a whole bunch of pictures. So if somebody's going to question the condition of the course, I've got them in this PowerPoint. We'll look at them together. But the greens are in great condition. The fairways are in very good condition. The course is in very good condition. It will only get better, because this is still early in the season. In the management company that we hired, every single reference that has come back has come back positive that they know what they're doing. They run six municipal golf courses. One of those is through a National Park Service in Truro, which means that not just us local officials vetted them, but the federal government had to vet them there as well. So I think that that puts us in pretty good stead as the type of the company we have. So, I think that that puts us in pretty good stead as the type of the company we have. Just to let you know, this year, already, they've already booked 40 tournaments, and they already have 180 league players that have already signed up. The last thing I want to point out is this. Is that we've presented a lot of numbers, and I know some people are always going to question numbers. So, again, I want to provide just real, hard data and facts. Scarlet Street, right now, is developable 35 acres. He purchased 81, but the difference is all wet. It's 46. Some would argue the 35 acres that's developable is wet. I agree. But in any event, it parked. He's going to be able to develop those 35 acres. He paid $3.8 million for those 35 developable acres. That means he paid $108,000 per developable acre. If we look at Riverbend, that means at 4.1 net million price, we're purchasing it at 36,000. You think a developer out there wouldn't want to purchase it for $36,000 an acre, knowing that the market only at two miles away, the guy paid 108? So, again, just keep that in mind as we go through this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenahan and Mr. Gagny. And I'll ask that the rest of the contingent that belongs up front come up front now before we begin. And our two presenters are going to stay where they are for the moment. And I will ask the Finance Committee, followed by the Board of Selectmen, for their recommendations, and then open it to the floor for questions. If any of you who are standing or sitting on the floor need a chair, we have about a dozen down front here, if you want to come down. I'd ask those of you speaking from this microphone just to come down and be orderly in the two aisles. And we'll try to go back and forth. And for those of you up in the balcony, I'm not sure. I guess I see the microphone right in the middle. So, girls, just wave to me if somebody wants to ask a question so that I can see that someone's there. And at this point, I will ask the Finance Committee for their recommendation.
Thank you. Of the six members present, we voted unanimously to support this article.
Thank you. Please. There is not to be any show of emotion, applause, or anything during the... As much as you'd like to or not like to, it's just something that, for those of you who are new at town meeting, we don't do. And I would ask the Board of Selectmen for their recommendation. Selectmen recommend.
Thank you. Actually, the vote was unanimous, but I'm not quite sure that stands.
Mr. Marrera.
Selectman Eldon Marrera voted against it. That was an incorrect assumption what he just put there. It was a two to one. I'd like to say a few things about this. I know they're saying the course is in good shape and all that.
Mr. Marrera?
Yes.
I didn't call on the voters get the first. Or Mr. Kenahan or Mr. Gagny, whoever's going to speak to the question first, please.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Kenahan, are you going to speak to the...
I'm sorry. I'm ready to open it up. I think that we've already spoken to it for a little while.
Thank you. Any questions from the voters? It was moved and seconded before the presentation.
Neil Conley, 376 Walnut Street. With the Selectmen divided on it, I'd like to have, hear from the Selectmen, how they feel on it individually. So, in other words, I'll be pulling the Selectmen for their input.
Okay.
It don't have to be a motion. It's a request.
Which one of the three of you would like to speak first?
Start with Eldon, then Jerry, and then Mr. Lynn.
Well, that's not your choice.
All right, I'll shut up.
Mr. Marrera.
Eldon Marrera, 30 Grant Street, West Bridgewater. I have reservations about this right from the beginning. I know that the, Mr. Gagny and Mr. Kenahan did a good job as far as research and very, very good salesmanship. But I have some reservations about this. Even when the cost of it, I mean, it's assessed for $2.5 million, and we're paying $4.5 million. I just sat down over there with the treasurer collector, and I said, what is this going to cost if it goes through 30 years in the bond issue? He says, about 7.2 million. Now, I've been around golf courses. I worked at the Brockton Country Club, and I know how much money it costs to maintain the greens and everything else. And one of the problems I have is, the way it is now, it's in the floodplain. And I know people that play on it now, and the advice that they gave me there, it's still wet. Half the time, you can't wear your sneakers over there because you're in the floodplain. And to drain this thing off, and it would probably be a problem with the Corps of Engineers, the DEP. And these are some of the areas. As far as we're paying for it, I think we're paying much too much for it. And I really think that it probably... I know people own golf courses, and they said, with a function room, it would be, it could probably run fine. But that's going to cost, what, another $2 or $3 million on top of this to have that in full operation? And I know. Now, this management company, in fact, I checked with Duxbury today, and I had a call just before I came here. They, Gagny, I told them what they told me. And I got a call from another golf course, and they told me, be careful what you do. So, I started to make the calls. It was late in the afternoon, and I called Pembroke. And Pembroke referred me to Duxbury. And Duxbury has been under this management for about 16 years. They had a problem. And of course, they went to court. And of course, Dave probably knows more about it. He talked to them too, the conversation. But we had, it's a short conversation. But anyhow, they're back with Duxbury, and they've been there for the other six years. Before it was ran by the fire, the fire had passed away. So, we're trying to check on this and all that goes with it. Because it's a big step for this town to do. And I know, you know, they're all telling you about the 40Bs and everything else. But we can't go everywhere there's 40Bs. Because I'll tell you right now, the town won't have enough money to buy the land. I mean, I'm well aware, and even if there's two rooms apartments like they are next door, I mean, especially up in Brockton, where some families there, they can put about 10 people in two rooms, you know. I know that. But anyhow, I just don't think the town should be in the real estate business, really. I just don't think so. Because, now, that sewer system they mentioned there, that's a pumped-up sewer system. We're not going to own the condos next door, but yet the sewer system is going to be used. There's a lot of things here. I just don't think, at this time, that we should be purchasing something like this. Even with the fee that they're going to pay, they've got all they can do to put that golf course, you know, in good shape, which I don't think it's in good shape now. And that'll take the fee. So, what are we going to do? That article in the paper, they say they're going to pay $25,000. Now, they told me that was wrong, and it's going over a period of five years. They couldn't even buy grass seed for that. I mean, there's a lot of things here, ifs and everything else about it. I just don't think it's a good buy. But I'm standing up before you now. I have not seen the purchase and the sales agreement, and I don't have a copy of the management agreement, okay? And I can't really go tell you up here, vote yes or no, because I haven't seen either one of those agreements. And maybe when I see the agreement, maybe I'll sign it, maybe I won't. But right now, I'm voting no, because I don't have enough information. I vote no.
Mr. Lawrence.
First of all, Mr. Moderator, I think it's a spectacular, spectacular turnout today. A lot of time, we come to town meetings and we lose hope that people care. Tonight, it shows you care, so I'd like to thank you all for coming out. I'd like to thank our town administrator and our newest junior Selectman, Anthony Kenahan, for a thorough, thorough job. I think this is a spectacular opportunity for the town to own this prime piece of real estate that is absolutely beautiful. It's, you know, the river runs through it. It's a spectacular piece of land. If you haven't been at a golf or drive through the golf course, it's a spectacular piece of very environmentally sensitive land. Reading back to the 80s, if you read the goals of the town, the goals of the town were to help preserve open space. This does it. And it does it at somebody else's expense. Is there risk? There's risk every day we step out of bed. Yeah, there's risks. But I think the two gentlemen that made the presentation did everything in their power and everything within their ability to make sure that that minimal, that risk was minimized. I have a lot of faith in those two gentlemen over there. I have a lot of faith in our town council, who worked hand in hand to make this happen. And it's happening with someone else paying for it. And it's a spectacular opportunity that's going to happen once. It's not going to happen again. I'm not threatening 40Bs. 40Bs will happen. They will happen. Not on that parcel in my hopes. That's a spectacular piece of property. Just a few years ago, we saved that fabulous farm that's building a wonderful farm stand across the street. We have an absolute wonderful avenue through there. Let's save that land. Let's make sure we save what we all love about this community, the small farming community that we all love. And anytime a shovel goes in the ground, I get phone calls, why are you damn Selectmen letting them build there? Why are you letting them do that? Why are you letting them do that? We're here to say we're not letting them do that. We are going to help save West Bridgewater the best of our ability, and we need your support, okay? There's at least two of us that are supporting this, that you all voted for. I'm asking you, please, 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 have faith that the two of us, along with our town administrator, who's, by the way, done a spectacular job since day one, please have faith in us and know we're doing what's best for your community. We're here for you. Please, believe me. It's for the people of this town, and you will not be sorry. I ask for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Kenahan, any further comments?
Mr. Conley, I'll keep it short for you. We found a way to preserve 167 acres without increasing the tax rate.
Thank you. Jerry.
Hi, I'm Jerry Scrunchey. I like Eldon very much. I have a lot of respect for Eldon. He cares so much about the town. We're very fortunate to have his home, so many years of service to this community. But there were a few discrepancies that I did want to point out because I think they're extremely important. First of all, when it's wet out, it's wet on the grass and your sneakers get wet if you're walking on Riverbend or you're walking in your yard. Second of all, he said something about the value being 2.5 million when we just presented that the value was over 3 million. Or maybe over 4 million, I forget. But it wasn't 2.5. Third, we presented that a function room would cost 1 million. Eldon just presented that it would cost 2 million. Another discrepancy. Eldon also said he had not seen the purchase and sale agreement or the management agreement. The management agreement, it's posted on our website, and it was, it's in his Selectmen's packet for every meeting. So, if he did not see it, it's because he did not look for it. But it is there, and you can access it yourself. So, these types of discrepancies are extremely important for you to know. There's nothing hidden. There's nothing bad. We, on the Finance Committee, don't always agree on everything. But I think that everybody in town has done their due diligence, and we firmly believe that this is the best move for West Bridgewater to preserve our open space.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Mr. Moderator, may I speak just for a sec?
Yes, John, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. For those that don't know me, I'm John Duggan, the tax collector. I was just speaking to Administrator Gagny. I just wanted, for clarifications, I'm not sure where the $26,000 taxes come up, but the golf course is assessed at, believe me, I'm impartial on this issue, $2,863,850. And the actual taxes paid on the golf course, $82,956. So, as a tax collector, I just wanted to clarify the information.
Mr. Conley.
I'm not going to tell how I'm going to vote. I'm a golfer. I golfed over there. But there are some things when you sit there and try to sell a product about kids. We don't have a hockey team in West Bridgewater either, I don't think. We don't have a skating rink. And I'm not being a wise guy. You guys done a great job explaining it's about time. You do these presentations, you do it, it gets out there, and the people understand it better. If Eldon didn't vote for it, do we have a purchase agreement still on that? Signed, ready.
We, town council has drafted a purchase and sale agreement, yes.
That's suitable, and both sides have seen it?
Yes, yes. It's gone back and forth multiple times. It's also posted on the website. All three of us have received it, yes.
And it scares people. We was at the candidate tonight with other people. They said, what can you do for elderly people? When you start borrowing money, it raises their taxes. But I see this, in my mind, you showed the other side of it, 40B, whatever it is. I don't own by terms. And I see you can keep that forever. I don't know how long it will be else. I'm 60 this year. I don't know if I'll be here as long as Eldon. But my kids, I'm looking at my grandkids and my grandkids. And my grandkids and great-grandkids in the future of the town. When you talked about across, I'm just reiterate, Mr. Chairman, Moderator, what people have said. When you talk across the street where they put, where they're putting up that farm, a couple of years earlier, we could have done something there, but they were shot down by the town. They didn't want to hear it because they wanted to put a target up there in the future, if they had to, for tax revenue. I talked to somebody about the Brockton, about the Brockton, the course over there. And they said, to run that course, who's going to maintenance that course? Our Riverbend, if we buy it. All right. The question he told me, Riverbend, it's, he told me, to run that course, to maintenance it, it's like $300,000 for nine holes a year. So, if you figure out 18. The problem is, I, what I was told, people were walking away from the course because he ran into the ground. I think the guy's name's Jerry. I don't know if he's here or not. He didn't keep up on the course. So, if you're going to sell it, you try to bring it up to make it look good. You talk about the new clubhouse, $1 million, that's nothing. Believe me, you might as well put a tent up. It could be 2 million, it could be 4 million, whatever you want to build. But I think his finance report, you really don't know the whole thing. Are we going to profit from it? I just hope, if we do, do we keep a tab on the money that's coming in? We should have that, always look at the finances of that regardless. Every year, every quarterly, what he's coming in. I think there should be a keeper of the house from the town that might have to go in there, make sure people aren't putting it in their pockets and walking out the door. There's a lot of things to be looking at if we go forward with this. But I think you guys done a great job explaining it. And I think it's a great course because we bent over backwards when they first built it. They couldn't get the septic in there, and the town did a lot, so they get in there and build it. My opinion, I wouldn't want to see it go. But I respect Eldon for standing up there, speaking. That's what they're elected for, to be leaders, not followers.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
I just want to point out, first of all, the town is not maintaining. We're not mowing, we're not plowing, we're not watering, we're not fertilizing. We're doing nothing. That's all the responsibility of the management company that's all in the contract. We have had the drafts of the PNS. We have the PNS.
We have had the drafts of the PNS, we have the PNS. It's been given to the entire board. The town administrator gave us draft after draft after draft, though it was mostly him and Anthony working on it, so they're the ones that really can address, address the innards of the, of the purchase and sales. Also, when it comes to the function facility, the function facility wouldn't be the taxpayers building a 2, 3, 4, 1 million dollar function facility. That would be worked out with the management company, and they would be the one to construct if they wanted a function facility on the, on the property. The good thing about Johnson Management Company, they're not in a hurry to build a function facility because their business is golf. They're gonna make their money in golf. They've been doing golf for 30 years, and they know there's money there. If they didn't know there was money there, they wouldn't be coming to the town, signing a 20-year lease. So the town's not maintaining this course. Ultimately, we're collecting their rent check, and they run it. It's their business. We just own it. When the contract's up, we'll have enough money to pay off the note, we hope. If not, we renew a lease, or we find another company. But when it, to say that the taxpayers are gonna pay for a $3 million clubhouse, we're not building anything. That's up to Johnson what they do.
Thank you. Someone step up to the microphone. I know several of you came down here, so.
Can I raise this up a little bit? My back's getting sore. I'll lower it for the next short person. Hey, Peter Turner, 390 Forest Street, West Bridgewater. When I first heard about this project, buying a golf course, my initial thought was, what in the world does West Bridgewater want a golf course for? I don't play golf. I'm never gonna play golf, probably, and I doubt I'll ever step there. But then I went to this hearing this past week, and we're not buying a golf course, we're buying open space. If you think about it, a couple of years ago, the town spent over a million dollars to purchase restrictions on open space. That's about $200 or so from every woman, man, and child in town, or better, to protect some open space in town. This here is gonna cost us $0 for every woman, man, and child in the entire town to protect 167 acres. That's awesome. That's really good. Now, it says here, 4.5 million dollars to get this. That's not nothing. However, we talked about, they're gonna want 4.1 million dollars to buy it, maybe we should be giving 3.9, maybe 2.9. Who cares? We're protecting open space, and we had this company that said, if you, we will give you the amount of money it takes to pay for the bond, plus some extra, if you just let us run a golf course there. That sounds pretty good. They get to run a golf course, we get our open space. In addition to that, there's money in an escrow account, so if they default on day one, as was mentioned, we have enough money to pay our bond for two whole years after they go. So we are well protected if it fails. Now, let's talk worst-case scenario. Let's say they do fail the first month, first year. What's gonna happen is we have money to pay the bond for two years. During that two years, we will be looking for people up here, and probably people out here too, to look into whether it's best to try to find someone else to run it, or to sell it for houses, or maybe subdivide so only 60 houses can go on it, and the rest is protected town conservation property, whatever we want to do with it. Or we may decide to have it go to another golf company. But once again, somebody else is running it, it's costing the town absolutely nothing to run this, and no tax dollars are gonna be used, and protecting a lot, lot of open space. And that's my thought on it, and I hope other opinions get expressed too. And thank you very much, Mr. Mortery.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Yes. Ms. Raze?
Sure. Hi, Mary Duggan Watson, 214 Copeland Street, West Bridgewater. I hate golf. I could give a rat's patouille about golf. But I love the children and the kids of West Bridgewater, and I think the impact on the school, the small-town feel. I'm 71, I'm older than Neil. I have grandchildren. I live on a limited budget. I support five family members who are incapable of making a living. You know, rehab and all that stuff. The, the small-town feel. If they build houses there, how many of you drive through West Bridgewater? It's full. It's full. 106 is full. 28 is full. I live on Copeland Street, it's like a drag strip from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. People taking a shortcut from Bridgewater to Brockton, getting, it, the town is full. The infrastructure is full. We don't need any more houses. They're building them everywhere. All right? It's a beautiful piece of land. I drive by and say, isn't that nice? I'll never go there, but it's like, and I'm happy that the kids can get there and, you know, maybe run some, might run, you know, uh, oh, run fundraisers, and I think it's a great idea. Hello? Okay.
You're good.
I'm old, I'm on a limited pension. Um, I don't care. It's not about me. It's about the kids. It's about the future. It's about the schools. Keeping the small-town atmosphere in the classroom. More teachers, more crowded classrooms, all that. You don't want that. The, the salaries for teachers. It's hard getting good teachers now. People don't want to do it anymore. It's too hard to teach. It's very hard. Keep the town away, keep that open space, please. And if you're old like me, and you're on a limited pension and budget and everything, you'll make it. You'll live. This will not terminate your life. This will not put you in the poorhouse. Thank you.
You're a hard act to follow, but. I'm Carol Ashton, 196 River Street. I'm in favor of our town purchasing the Riverbend Golf Course because I believe that land is a sacred trust, which we, in this moment, in West Bridgewater's history, can make a positive difference by voting to secure the oversight of this land. Purchasing the land would enable us to take care of God's good earth to the best of our ability. Personally, I'm interested in the preservation of our water and soil, and Riverbend land is important to both. One of my concerns is the use of pesticides on golf courses. I wanted to know if the Johnson Management Company would be using them, when I learned, learned after a visit to the town administrator's office, that the company, the Johnson Company, is doing their best to be eco-friendly. At their Highland Links course, they are using Osbourne Organics and beyond pesticides. In their turf management, they are using molasses, kelp, and soy products. As was mentioned at the informational meeting, the town also has the right to exercise conservation testing water pollutants. For me, this information added to the many other positive pluses and opinions here solidified my yes vote. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
William Kane, 21 American Avenue. I almost said my old address. We lived there for so long. I think this question goes to the finance committee, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm older than everybody else that's already spoken, and I too don't play golf, I don't care anything about it, but I love the, it's a beautiful place over there. Of all the conversations, I've not heard one word about the CPA. Maybe I even misunderstand what the CPA is all about, but if I understand it correctly, the purpose of having the Community Preservation Act was to have money available to make purchases such as we're talking about tonight. I haven't heard a word about it. I, I personally would like to see everything that we've been talking about go forward just as it is with one extra thing, that every penny that is received by the CPA for the duration of this mortgage, every penny be put toward the principal on the mortgage and accelerate the payoff of the mortgage. And it would save the town a lot of money, I'm sure. I'm sure Mr. Duggan would know a lot more about figures than I do. Thank you.
Any response, finance? John?
We, we did have the CPA in as, as a part of our budget presentations, and we did, in fact, ask them very pointed questions with an interest towards the golf course in terms of how much money we could put towards the golf course purchase. One of the realities is that, as, on a yearly basis, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony, or Jerry, or Eldon, is that on a yearly basis, there really isn't as much money in those funds as we would need. The other thing is that the seat, the, those funds are going to designated into various buckets, and so you're looking at different buckets to pull funds from, and so that would be kind of like creative accounting, I believe, to try to be dipping into different buckets. So the thought hasn't ended, it's just that we're limited by the buckets, we're limited by the amount of money that's in those funds. But we did, we, we are, we were thinking about that and asked many, many questions at their budget presentation with an eye towards trying to divert some of those funds to the, to the course, but it would never cover the mortgage payment.
Thank you. Ms. Raze?
Denise Raze, 48 Columbus Avenue. I have three questions, mostly regarding the negotiations of the contract. And the first one is, does the contract with the management company rely upon certain financial results to be achieved? So for example, what if revenue is materially less than what's forecasted?
That's not my problem, as long as they make their annual payment. I don't really care what they make. I hope they do well, for our sake, but no. Those, we didn't make projections, we showed you the history of the current owner, and we believe that the new management company will operate it much better, and that their revenue will actually be greater than the, the current owner.
So they're not relying on any projections that were provided to them?
I'm sure that they have projections that they put together when they put together what they offered us, but no, that's, that's on them.
Is there an out clause in the contract with Johnson that they can invoke prior to year 20?
I think what you're saying, I want to make sure I understand the spur of the question. I think what you're saying is if they're not happy, they can walk away.
Well, not necessarily happy for any reason. Is there any clause within the contract that they can invoke prior to year 20 and depart from the contract without any consequences?
Only if they file bankruptcy.
Okay. And, and the bond, you mentioned that if they file bankruptcy, we can then collect against the bond.
Sure.
If for some reason they do default on the contract, other than taking it to litigation and our chances in court, can we still collect against the bond, or no?
Yes.
So if they, the relationship ends, we can automatically collect against the bond?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good job, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Cabral.
Art Cabral, 77 Walnut Street. First, I want to echo what Jerry Lawrence said when he opened his remarks. It's really good to see how many people are here tonight. For those of you, the vast majority who have not been at the last three or four, all these numbers about the cost of school, the potential for 40B, we hear every town meeting lately as we're being asked to buy property, whether it's a single-family lot, or it's the farm across the street from Riverbend, which we did not save, by the way, while we were being asked to buy it, which the town meeting rejected. There was another deal going on behind it to do the exact same thing so that that farmer would get that property. So by rejecting it, the town saved that money, and there was no change in the use of it over there. But what really got me out of my chair here tonight was what Mr. Duggan said about the taxes on that property. All the things that have been shown up here for how much money we have at the end of 20 years after they pay in their money into a revolving fund that we can only touch for the golf course, has been being compared to $26,000 a year cost. If it's over $80,000 a year, that that's actually costing us, at the end of those 20 years, we're not ahead. We're in the hole, because you've just increased that cost by almost four times, if I'm understanding that, what you said correctly. And that money is actually in the general fund, which we can spend. So by approving this, the way I'm understanding this right now, we're taking this money out of the general fund where we could use it for other things, and we're putting it into something that we cannot even touch for 20 years unless we spend it on the golf course, and if we do, then we don't have any of that money at the end anyway. So I would really like that clarified, because that difference in numbers really concerns me.
So let me, let me explain the base numbers first, and then we'll talk about what, what John just mentioned. According to the information that I know, is that we're gonna receive $388,000 at closing, and assuming a 4.5% interest rate, we would make $56,000 a year. At 5%, we'd make $40,000. We never worried about what the tax was on the property. And the reason we weren't going into it with that as, as a thought process is because we've already showcased that if it gets developed, on the school costs alone, we're gonna lose a million. So I'm not, whether it's 26,000 or 80,000 or whatever, I was not, that was not the primary focus, because you will spend more than that if it gets developed. However, based on the information that was provided to me, I said, okay, at 4.5%, we're gonna bring in $56,000. We'll net out $30,000 a year. At $26,000 at 5%, we'll net out a $14,000 a year. I have a spreadsheet which we can go over and we can look at, but I have it directly from the Board of Assessors, that's why I just scrolled through it, and I can do that in a moment, that shows that their, their lower tax rate under 61A is 26, 27,000. Their full taxes, at least according to the spreadsheet I have, is 82,000. But again, according to what I'm getting from the assessors, they don't pay 82,000. It's in a tax-deferred status because in 61A. They're only being charged 26, 27,000 a year, at least that's the information that I have.
Believe me, I'm not trying to be the villain in all this. I just, I printed out the tax bill, you know, today. This is the first time I was asked, which is right, David went to the assessors, but it's MAP 41, uh, 47, I'm sorry, 045, and it's 82,000, and that's based on the 61B recreation. The total assessment is 4,375,960. However, the reduced assessment, because of being in 61B, as you know, Arthur, is the figure I gave earlier, 2,863,850. So I'm just taking apples to apples. It's MAP 47, not 45. I'm not trying to.
No, and again, I mean, I.
In the interest of transparency and clarification.
And again, all I can do is, this came directly from the assessors, their actual tax, you can see it's highlighted, their actual tax for FY '17 is 26,378. If it was totaled, you can see at the bottom, 55,386 is what they don't pay because not full and fair. You add the two, it comes out to 82,000. It's the only, that's, all I can tell you is what I have.
Mr. Turner.
Warren Turner, 1800 Road. I figured you might as well, somebody really old ought to speak to this thing. Been, been in West Bridgewater as long as there's dirt, but at any rate, please, don't even think about stealing my CPA, please. I'm on the CPA committee, best damn committee in town. You know, nine of the smartest people I've ever met, and they, we sit there and we discuss probably 10 different things we could spend this money on, and we come to a reasonable decision between this every single year, and the money is spent very carefully and very wisely, and there isn't a whole heck of a lot left over. So, and, and the way the system is set up, where we have to divide the money up between housing and rest, old property restoration and 40Bs, et cetera, there's five buckets we have to put it in. By the time you're done, it really doesn't go very far. So please, leave my CPA alone. These guys are doing a great job. It's the best committee in town. Where are you gonna get a job where somebody gives you $200,000 a year and says, "Go out and do something nice for the town"? And that's exactly what we do. You know, and believe me, we don't have a heck of a lot left over, and we got 10 people standing in line for it. So golf courses are not on the list, and I don't see, from my recollection anyway, that we don't need it for the golf course. We've got, corners are all covered. We've got money to back this up, we've got money to back that up. We're not responsible for this, we're not responsible for that. Nobody's gonna stand up here and say, "It's not gonna cost the town anything," because that would be lying to you, because somewhere, somehow, it's gonna cost us something. But the way they've structured this thing now, however much they do, if we lose money on it, it won't be enough to show up on your tax rate, believe me. He said, "They've got the thing covered, and we've got to protect our children in school." You know, the last thing we want to do is to have so many new students in town that we lose our school choice students. They're paying money to come here. Now, you say, "Well, they're not, that would cost us $10,000, and they're only paying five." Well, look at it realistically. You put four kids in a room, and new, new kids in a class, you don't have to hire any more teachers, you don't have to hire any more janitors, you don't need any more people in the cafeteria. You really don't need additional people if you increase the size of the classes slightly, or even moderately. It's just that we took the whole school budget, counting transportation and everything else, and these kids don't use our transportation, by the way, including transportation, and we took the number of students and divided it into the school budget, and that's where we get the 10 grand. But realistically, it's not costing us $10,000 a student. There are students which are handicapped or disadvantaged in one form or another, that we put in a car every day and take them someplace, and they're costing us $10,000 a year all by themselves. But we gotta do it. It's the right thing to do, and up to now, anyway, West Bridgewater has always done the right thing for their students. And another thing to consider about these 200 students we take in, probably most of you are not aware, that those 200 students are good students. Their parents care. Their parents care. They take the time to get up an hour early to get them ready to go down here to West Bridgewater to school. They work out carpools amongst themselves so they can. I was talking to Chris Cross the other day, and we were talking about the Scholarship Committee, and he, you know, the top 10, out of the top 10 --
Mr. Turner, just stay within the scope, please.
Okay. But at any rate, these kids are in the top of the class. We don't want to lose them. Maybe with a little luck, they'll live here someday. We could do a lot worse, believe me. So I wholeheartedly support this thing, and I can't see that, you know, yes, it's not inconceivable that it's going to cost us a few bucks realistically, but you won't see it on your tax bill.
Mr. Lucini?
William Lucini, 45 Kenan Street. I am the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I think that -- I'd just like to clarify a couple of things. Some of the information up here and some of the things I read here really aren't what it is. We are going to get these 40Bs someplace, whether it's there or it's down the street. They're coming. So when we say that by buying this, that we're going to save our infrastructure with the police, the fire, the water, all of those things, that's really not going to happen because if it doesn't land there, it's going to land somewhere else. And right now, before the zoning board, not before us yet, but there are two companies ready to come forward for a permit or two permits. It was also up here that if there's 420 apartments, it's 100 and some odd affordables. And when you start adding all that up, you're going to have all, you know, all these people, all these kids for schools. Well, when you have apartments, you get 100% credit toward your affordable, your 40B. So if somebody builds 100 of them, you get 100%. Not building 100 houses and getting 25%. So apartments are really the way to go. If you -- if we can talk those contractors into doing apartments, we can be done with this a whole lot easier. And apartments, from what I'm told, I'm not an expert on that part of it, but apartments bring less children, okay? So all I'm saying is when you look at 420 apartments and you get -- excuse me? All right. So all I'm telling you is that information is not true. 100 apartments gets you 100 affordables. We need about 120 to be out of this thing? Yeah, we do. So I am telling you now that with the two people that are going to file, we will be done with the 40Bs. You'll have it, okay? So I take issue with what that says, and I take issue that we're not going to increase our police and fire and water by buying this. I'm all for open space. Don't get me wrong. I don't have a problem with that. But don't advertise this as that's going to go away because it is not. Thank you.
Come to a --
Right. I've got to stand up and do it at the mic, so he has to take it. Right? Right. Move the question, please.
Is there a second? Okay. It's non-debatable. There's a motion on the floor that's been seconded to move the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Debate ends, and we will be voting on the motion. If I could have those people who agreed to be tellers to come forward to be sworn in by the town clerk?
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Conley?
Can -- what kind of --
Please be quiet.
What kind of voting are we doing here? Are we going by a voice or a secret ballot?
If you -- I explained it at the beginning.
I'm getting old, too. The years are going.
I know. This is -- I'll be 60 this year, though, too, so.
Well, you beat me, and I won't chase you no more.
You have a ballot you were given when you come in. You will be using this. I'm exercising General Bylaws, Chapter 3, Section 12, that the moderator can call for a ballot vote.
So that's a secret ballot, more or less.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll go over that procedure once the tellers have been sworn in. If you would just keep the chatter down so the clerk can give instructions to the tellers, For those of you who are in the balcony, there will be a teller coming up there, and there will be a ballot box up there as well. Once everyone is in place and we give instructions as to how to come to vote, you need to bring both your green card and the ballot. You will tear your ballot. You will put your vote in the box. You will put your cast-off ballot in the paper bag, but do not throw the green card Because if there are any subsequent votes, if you don't have the green card, you cannot If I could have your attention, please. During the voting, please remain in order so that everybody gets a chance to vote. The tellers will be coming up the aisles, and you can deposit your -- oh, I'm sorry. You will come forward.
No, then they will go up to them.
All right. So there are two boxes up front, two boxes down back, and there's one box upstairs. You're going to come forward with your green card and your yes and no. If you don't have your green card, you're not going to be allowed to vote. So you're going to show the green card. You're going to put your vote in the box, and you're going to take your seat again. Do not put your green card up here because if you have to vote again and you don't have it, you won't be able to vote. That has to go back to the seat with you, okay?
If you are unable to go to a ballot box to cast your ballot, raise your hand, and someone will come to you once everyone has voted. Thank you. You may begin over here, over here. If everyone would please take their seats. The votes have been counted. 463 votes were cast. Two-thirds is 308. There were 370 yes, 93 no. I want to thank everyone for being here before we dissolve the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We have two more articles. Don't go home. I'm ready to go home. Article two, Selectman Kinnahan.
So there are two more articles?
Yes, there are. Needs a voice vote.
Move that the town amend the general bylaws by adding Article 55 as printed on the warrant.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Finance Committee.
Of the six members present, we voted unanimously to recommend the article.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to it?
So all we're asking you to do is we have to have a mechanism to pay for the golf course where it doesn't affect the taxpayer. So we have to create an account where the money that they generate through the management company that they're paying us, that money comes into an account, we pay it out of the account. That way, we don't have to set up against the tax rules. That's what Article 22 does, is create -- I'm sorry, 55 -- Article two. That's what it does is it creates the account, and it spells out the ability that we have to be able to make all the payments, that we have to make the bond payment, the insurance payment, that type of stuff. Again, the intent is so that way it doesn't cost the taxpayer a dollar.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the voters? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. The motion carries by majority. Vote. Article three, Selectman Kinnahan.
Move that the town set the upper limit of expenditures from the town golf course revolving fund established under Article 55 of the town bylaws at $400,000.
Is there a second? Would you like to speak to the article?
Sure. So it's an archaic state law, but the law says that we have to just set a limit that we can't spend more than. So the bond payment's going to be about 270 to 290. If we have legal fees, we have anything else we have to pay out of that account, we just set the limit a little bit higher. You actually do it every single year at your town meeting for a fire revolving account and other accounts. We just have to do it on this one as well.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
Of the six members present, we voted unanimously to recommend this article.
Board of Selectmen.
We recommend unanimously.
Any questions or comments from the voters? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Now I can say before we dissolve, thank you for being here. You were part of history, the biggest town meeting so far in the new school, the first time we've used a PowerPoint presentation at a town meeting. I will call for a motion to dissolve.
Motion to dissolve the meeting.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Meeting is dissolved.